Voice on recognition. I mean, I got that twice.
You know what, I wanted to go ask the mayor something real quick. Now that time.
Good evening, folks. I appreciate it here. All right. For our city council meeting agenda, October 27th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. If you would, Madam Clerk, call this in order.
Councilmember Jimmy Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble. Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Mayor Jason Larry.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. If you stand for invocation and place of allegiance, please. If you do, it's a pleasure, please, sir.
Let us pray. Give an honor to our great and glorious Father, and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you again for this opportunity to serve you through serving others. Father, we ask that you come in this evening and give us wisdom, direction, and understanding that we might work synergistically to move forward to make this a great city, a great county, a great state, a great country, and a great world. So we honor you in all this. We seek your wisdom and direction today, and we thank you for your presence as we commit and submit this meeting to you that you might be glorified in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Place of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Good evening, folks. How you doing? All right. Very good. Very good. We're going to honor a person this evening that I want to tell you about that is very special, very, very special to the city of Stonecrest. And I want to do that by giving some truths and some short stories. And I'll make it brief, though. And we'll just move from there. I met this person some years ago. And I grew up in an average town in Georgia, Macon, Georgia. And I was in four H Club growing up, but mainly just wanted to be a basketball player. And after that didn't work out. I then went on to some other things and off to school. And well, pretty much this month, well, next week, I'll celebrate 40 years, 40 years in being in this market. So I've been up here for a pretty, pretty long time. And as we began to develop the city of Stonecrest from scratch, as a matter of fact, we had to take into account all the things people wanted, how we live, work, play, how we worship, shop, educate in this area, and to be able to determine that we can meet the needs of everyone. So it wasn't a city just for a certain sector of people. It was a city for everyone. And one of the main things that we had to consider is our lifestyle with regards to our parks, Arabian Mountain, how we take care and nurture nature, because that was a big reason why people moved out this way. Would you all agree? All right. So in putting together the different organizations to be able to make sure that we take care of that situation, I had to learn some things from a very special lady that's sitting in this audience. Because if it was up to me originally during my wicked ways, Mr. and Ms. Morgan, trees was just in the way of concrete. You know, just knock them all down. Knock them all down. And, you know, and, but we wouldn't be mean to the trees. We used it, we used the timber to build other stuff. So this person helped me change my wicked ways and to learn to appreciate hugging trees and, and looking at the flowers and, and, and being with Sheldon and making sure that we had the right things in place. One of the, one of the terms I learned from this person was manaknak. And I mispronounced it for years. Still don't have it right, as a matter of fact. All I know was it's a walk in the woods. So I gave you these stories just to say, to appreciate and honor a woman that I've gotten to know over the years who taught me the better side with regards to how we appreciate, you know, our side of town and the things that we have. And we want to present her today with our first community champion award for this area, and that's Ms. Mira Cardenas.
Thank you all very much. For those of you who don't know, I'm going to be leaving the area in the next couple of months. I'm headed up to take on a new challenge for another national heritage area in Cleveland, Ohio. So it has been such an honor to be part of the formation of the city of Stonecrest. I came to Arabian Mountain before Stonecrest was even a, before the city was even a thought. And it, it has been an honor to make the community connections and, and really just to work with everyone here and see everyone's passion for building the community and see everyone's passion for nature, even though it might be buried deep. It's nice to know it, it, it comes up. And it, it really has been so gratifying to work on so many different projects with so many people here in this room. So thank you all for the opportunity. I'll be around for a couple more months. So you might be wondering, didn't she say she was going somewhere? But thank you all very much. And thank you very much, Mayor, for this honor.
So we're full of surprises today. And I'd like for council to come down, every member. All right. This is a very, very special occasion today. And I want you all to appreciate the people that are really standing here with council. Each one of them brings a very unique and very specific skill. Quite frankly, to council. And I really appreciate each, each one of them. And then, of course, they have to work with me, which is even a, even a larger task. But we're all on the same page about where we want to go and the quality that we bring to Stonecrest and how we serve you all as constituents. That's what this is about. We have a money person. We have a creative person. We have a film person. We have an audience guy. We have the whole package up here. Anytime we want to ask each other some, something, we get together and do it. So with that, we'd like to announce and unveil to you our first rendition of where our new home will be. So in short, we have purchased the Sam's Building. And inside, this will be our new Stonecrest City Hall. We'll also make this opportunity to be able to have studio, audience, film opportunities. Councilman George Turner is looking into us being able to relocate a post office there. Also, inside of the building is probably a million dollars' worth of refrigeration units that we're going to extract from the building and see if we can draw a possible healthy food grocer, if you will, on that particular end of it, and be able to use our assets to help them move somewhere else, because that's one of the things that, that we couldn't do in this particular building. And also, I'll use this term, a top golf type of opportunity that we can put in the back with regards to the two stories that we have. Now, this part that Mira's not going to like that much, but they have 14 acres of trees. About six acres coming down, baby. Six of those acres are coming down. And we'll do something good with that timber and make sure that's the, the point of it. But the reason that we wanted to announce this to you all today is that, simply put, we will be paying the same or less for purchasing a place than we will be renting a place here. How about that? Good deal. All right. Now, how y'all going to take a picture with standing in front of this? I don't know. So let's take it. Oh, and by the way, the initial designer? That's from Jimmy Clayton. He created all the AC. Okay, council. We will move to the approval of the city council agenda. However, before we do that, if you all then indulge me for the next 10 seconds, I want to tell each and every one of you all what a pleasure it is to work with you. This is some heavy lifting, and we do some heavy lifting fast. I have to tell you, folks in the audience, there is no way on this planet, another municipality could do the things that we're doing with the quality and speed. Remember that. Quality and speed that mayor and council conducts with regards to what we're doing. And I want us to give them a round of applause. All right. With that, are there any changes for the agenda?
We, we need to leave that on there, but we need to approve it as a formal withdrawal.
Oh, yeah.
But we need to remove the first readings listed after new business A and B. That needs to come off because those are not first readings. Those are just rezones.
I got you. For new business A and B, RZ-19?
Yes.
Uh, double O, triple O, seven and eight. So remove the, the first readings from, from those pieces.
Yes.
All right. Anything else, folks?
Talking about the agenda?
Yes, sir. Is the deal on there?
It's not. Is it, is it on there?
Oh, G, you see it, G? Deal. Good deal. Okay.
We want to add final to that. On G, make it the final phase one plat.
Final, correct.
Also make that on G. Make it final phase one plat. If there's no further changes, I'll take a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval of the agenda for tonight with the stated modifications.
Properly moved. They have a second.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Agenda approved with modifications. We'll move to our minutes. First round is approval of the October 14th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Give you a moment, council, to relook at that agenda. Or relook at those minutes, meetings. If we have none, I'll take a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Make a motion that we approve the October 14th, 2019 city council meeting minutes.
All right. Properly moved.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There we have it. All right. For the minutes approval for October 23rd, 2019, called meeting minutes. Same rules apply. If no changes, I'll take an approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Make a motion that we approve the October 23rd, 2019 called meeting minutes.
All right.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Minutes approved. We've had our presentations. We'll go into our public hearings. Yep. All right. So, um... Yeah. I'm only moving to the back. Yeah. Yep. I'm just moving to the back. All right. We'll take the first part hearing. It's a perfect, first public hearing that's coming up, RZ-19 dash 0007.
Okay. Sorry. Weird being this close to you guys. So, so this first case you used this evening is RZ-19-007. This is a, a second time you guys will hear this case. It was deferred at the August 26th city council meeting. So a traffic study could be completed and submitted to staff for review. Also, to allow the applicant to have several more community meetings to discuss with the community regarding their concerns, heard about certain issues regarding development. Again, the applicant is Rockland Holmes with a battle law representing it. The subject property is 1794, 1800, and 1850 Phillips Road. The total acres for the subject property is 30.10 acres, and applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from R100 to RSM for the development of 211 attached townhomes. Again, the background information, again, on this, on this application, again, the application was, was heard at the August 26th city council meeting. The applicant was asked to submit a traffic study due to trip generations submitted in their application. They did finish that study and submitted to staff, which I'll get to in a couple of minutes. They also were, were asked to have several more community meetings, which they did. One, they did have on September 25th, 2019. Again, the comments that they received from that neighborhood meeting, again, was traffic concerns, density, the price point, and the future development of the area. Again, to go over some general information regarding the property, again, just to kind of, so we're, so we're kind of familiar with it again. Again, the subject property is R100. The future land use character area for the area is suburban. Some of the policies for the suburban area is protect stable neighborhoods from incompatible development that, that could alter established single-family residential development patterns and density, promote moderate density, traditional neighborhood developmental style residential subdivisions. The surrounding uses are all residential, and the surrounding zoning classifications are, again, are RSM, MR1, and R100. The applicant did submit a revised site plan listening to the concerns of the, of the, of the community regarding the overall density. So they dropped down from 240 of their original request down to 211. As you can see, they had decided to do open a big green space located to the south, southeast of the property. Again, they, this style, they decided to do 26 lots to do rear entry to allow, for a lot more parking, parallel parking down at the bottom. And then they also did additional parking closer towards Phillips Road. That's just revised site plan A. Site plan B is they do not have the rear entry, rear entry of townhomes, but they're all front entry, front-loaded townhomes. So they submitted for consideration either site plan A or B. Again, this is just the proposed elevations, again, showing the different elevations which the applicant is willing to, to develop at the site. The applicant, applicant did submit a traffic study to staff for the review. Staff did review in the level of service that the applicant, that the level of service which the traffic study shows that there's a minimal change of level of service as indicated in the chart submitted in the traffic study. Most of the traffic, the, the level of service are either A or B with a full build-out. Most of them still maintain their A or B status, except for one, which is is westbound at Phillips Road. It drops down from a B level to a C level. Again, that's still acceptable from the engineering standpoint that it does not cause a, a new hardship or on or, or excess traffic along Phillips Road. So therefore, staff, staff and planning commission recommend approval of the application with 16 conditions. Three of the conditions were submitted by the applicant itself. Oh, also, I also meant to mention there, there is a, one more condition that staff did recommend. I'll have to read a memo from the city engineer because he cannot be here to address the traffic concern. As I'm reading this, it says, Phillips Road is a two-lane collector road posted at a 40 mile per hour with approximately 3,500 vehicles per day or about 150 vehicles in peak hours. Staff is recommending that the site be limited to a right-in and right-out only driveway to the north and single full-access driveway to the south. The full-access driveway shall have a deceleration lane and a left lane constructed to the city's standards. There is adequate site distance at the entrance and sidewalk is being required for pedestrian safety. Phillips Road is not a candidate for traffic calming measures due to its classification as an anchor, as a collector road. A traffic signal warrants for the installation of a traffic signal are defined in the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Based on the traffic study submitted and the road improvements that are being required by the city is in the professional opinion by the city engineer that a traffic signal on Phillips Road at this proposed subdivision is not warranted. However, in order to ensure that there are no future traffic or safety issues at the entrance, the city engineer is recommending that the developer be required to submit a safety issue, a, a, a traffic study called intersection control evaluation for this intersection. This traffic study will evaluate the traffic and safety at the intersection and determine whether a traffic signal always stop, a roundabout, or no improvement is required. And I also have staff here to address, Josh Reed, land development, to address stormwater, stormwater issues as well.
What's the timeline for that traffic study?
Whenever the, I would, if you guys pass the conditions, require them to submit, I, I would hope sometime in the near future, maybe a month or two. But I'm not too sure. Ken didn't get back to me on the, on the timeline on that.
By the developer or by the city?
Uh, by the developer.
So are you saying then with this traffic study, they're looking at additional traffic lights and/or turn lanes?
Well, the traffic study will determine if traffic lights are warranted, a four-way stop or a roundabout, or there's no improvements that are warranted. Because this traffic study is to, is to define that problem. It's to see if there is a problem. And if there is a problem, then they need to, to address it.
So we would not pass, approve, defer with that traffic, contingent upon that traffic study?
No, 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 no.
Recommend an approval?
No, we're still recommending approval, but to, to help ease some of the concerns of the, of the, of the, of the citizens is to ask the developer to do another traffic study to show that either is, that a traffic light is warranted or not warranted as well. If you, if it's the city, if it's the council's will, you can ask to defer again until that's submitted back. But it's up to you. Staff is recommending approval because, again, staff believe that currently does not, does not believe a traffic issue due to the traffic study that they submitted. But it is another set of precautions if you want to ask them to do another traffic study to see if a traffic study, a traffic signal is warranted at that location.
So what's the difference between the tra, the traffic study they submitted and the one that you're recommending they get?
They're, they're looking specifically at that area, at that intersection to see if there is a need for a traffic light.
And the one they did look at?
Is this overall in the area of overall impact with the developments going southbound, northbound, and southbound.
On Phillips Road?
Yes. Yes, sir. Well, it's only Phillips Road and a couple of other roads and around the area.
Okay.
And I don't want to get too much because, again, not a traffic engineer, so.
So with that, with that ask being done after we approve, what teeth does that have?
Well, you would put it, well, you would put it in the conditions so they would have to do it, and therefore, they would have to do the traffic calming measures. If you, if you, because that's a recommendation that the city engineer is asking to, to be listed in the conditions that they have to submit this traffic study. And wherever the results of that traffic study, they have to adhere to that.
So Mr., excuse me, for me.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hill, the brand also sent me an email this morning that I shared with yourself and some other, others, including the attorney for the developer and some of the citizens as well. well. One of the, I would read just the last, first portion of it basically says the same thing that you said, that he's recommending a traffic study called an intersection safety analysis. The reason that that's important to me is because at that particular, if that, if this development is approved, you're gonna, you have the potential of children, young adults, or old adults even, crossing that road, crossing Phillips Road to go to two and four, fro, from the rec center. So, and I think that's very, very important for me. And according to what Mr. Hildebrandt said, he says, I spoke to their traffic engineer, I don't know, I'm not certain who he meant by there, on Friday, and told them that it was critical in this analysis, that they look at pedestrian safety, which is my main concern in this analysis. This could potentially be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, similar to the one attached, which he submitted a picture. I don't know if you have a picture for viewing or not.
If I've got to add it, sorry, sir.
No, no problem, but, you know, and I think, and I will let the developer, the representative for the developer speak, you know, as, in regards to this, but that is a condition that is very important to me.
Yes, sir.
So my point is that, it's to piggyback based on what Council McCauley, Councilwoman Cobble says, and that we definitely need to add teeth to whatever it is, you know, not just a study, but, you know, as a result of the study, that something is going to be done after the fact, and that it's not going to be on the city to do it, but on the developer.
Yes, sir.
All right, then.
What number is?
Oh, it would be number 17. I forgot to add it into your packet late, late this evening. I had to print it out. It should be in your packet with rezoning, comments from Ken Hildebrandt, again, rezoning comments. It should be number...
He is letter.
It should be number five, but it will be number 17 in the conditions with staff. It should be, you should have a packet that says like this, it'd be in your packet along with the memo.
Yeah, it was.
If you go on the back sheet, it says, or, or next sheet, it says recommended zoning conditions requested, and it should be number five.
This sheet.
Yeah, that is, that's the correct one.
Okay.
Actually, no, that's, can I see that again, sir?
I just wanted to make sure that it said, that they had adhered to the results of the study.
That's the language that he submitted. Now, again, you can, city council can always make that change in the language, and again, we were included in there to specifically add that language in there. It would be, be in the minutes and in the zoning conditions, too.
Oh, I see it, I see it. All right, okay, okay, okay. All right, if we're initially satisfied, I'll take a motion to open public hearing.
I move that we open the public hearing for rezoning RZ-19-0007.
All right, properly moved, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, hearing is now open. We will start with those in favor. Applicant.
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law here, representing Rockland Homes. We are extremely excited about this particular project and the opportunity to bring quality development within the area around Phillips Road. I know that this project has caused a lot of challenges for the community. We have been able to have a number of meetings, and we have tried to adapt the site plan in order to address some of the issues and comments that we received. We wish we could make everybody happy, but at the end of the day, what we have tried to do is to be cognizant of the issues that have been raised and to try and address them to the best of our ability, while still having a project that we believe is viable and will allow for quality development along within this particular piece of property. This 30-acre lot has been used previously as the horse farm, and I know that there are many who would love to see it remain just as the horse farm. However, the owner of the property is an estate, and they are looking to sell this land. And so Rockland has looked at this property for the development, initially of 241 townhomes. After meeting with the community and listening to the issues that they had, we actually reduced the overall density of the project from eight units per acre to seven units per acre, which resulted in losing 30 lots. And that 30 lots, where we lost those units actually, now can be shown in the area where you have that rather significant amount of green space in the, what I'll say, the north, well, I guess on that plan in the right upper hand corner. That is where we lost the lots and where we replaced that with green space. And what that did was allow for the natural setting of the property over in that area, kind of a large playfield area for the families and, and residents in the community. Additionally, it eliminated the lots that are off of Phillips Place, having kind of their rear yards disrupted in terms of foliage and keeping the buffer as it is currently in line. Additionally, we have the two curb cuts off of Phillips Road, and as you're entering into the site, we have, and one of the issues that came up was having parking and having areas for guest parking throughout the project. And so we have placed strategically parking in the front area. We're also showing some parallel parking in various locations throughout the site and made sure that the roads are wide enough so that emergency vehicles can get through as well as having cars in the area. Additionally, we looked at traffic-related issues. We will be doing streetscaping along Phillips Road. We will be installing curb gutter and sidewalks. Along with that, we are very aware of the issues with crossing over to the park area. We actually had meetings with the county transportation department, Patrice Keeter, as well as with Ken Hildebrandt, discussions with regards to traffic. We know that we will have to work cooperatively with both the city and the county, as the county owns the property on the other side of the street, and they still have an interest in Phillips Road. So we will be working cooperatively in order to ensure safe passage for individuals who will be hopefully frequenting the park across the street. And so to that effect, we will and have agreed to the additional condition that has been placed, and that in terms of what the process would be, if the application is approved, then we would move into the land development phase. That particular study would have to be done before we were able to complete the land development compor, portion of the project. And any improvements, I have no doubt that Ken will enforce to make sure that we install whatever is required under that particular study. So we are prepared for that if this application is approved. What we know about this area is that it is expanding. We've got townhomes that are a little further up from this project. We've got a mixed-use project that is on the, the north side of the project on the DeKalb, well, I guess it's still in Stonecrest on the other side, and that has access to Stone Mountain Lithonia, which is supposed to be a rather large project in addition to the RSM, single-family homes where Phillips Place and others are located. But we believe that the rezoning to RSM is an appropriate rezoning. And then the last thing I want to talk about is drainage. There were a lot of issues that the community had about drainage, and we took those very seriously. We actually went out, myself, along with Tim Jenkins, Bobby Watkins with AEP Engineering, and we also had our contractor. We went out, we met with some of the homeowners, particularly, I can't think of Eric's last name, but we met with Eric, we met with Sharon, I think, and one other homeowner. They took us on a walk through what the water issues were with the property. And what we came to find was that the way that the drainage systems were installed previously have posed some challenges for the community. We are not going to be technically adding to that water. What you will find is that, kind of counterintuitive, that we're going to have all of this impervious surface, and it's going to make it better, but the truth of the matter is, it will make it better. Why? Because currently, they're getting a lot of water off of this site with it unimproved, with no detention facilities on the property. We will be building a detention pond, which will hold that water for a significant period of time and release it at a much slower rate into the system. And so what that will do is it will actually slow down the water that is coming off of this particular piece of property, which should make things better. Additionally, we took one additional step, and I know that the council members are aware of this, because there have been a number of emails that have been flying around. But we reached out to DeKalb County after meeting with the residents, and we were able to get the county to acknowledge that they had responsibility for the detention pond behind some of the homes, and they have indicated that they will be coming out to the site in order to improve and maintain the detention pond, which apparently has not been done in probably over 15 to 20 years. So the county is putting it on its list. I did ask for some dates when that would happen, and I will continue to pursue that to make sure that those residents get some relief along there. I know that they have been making phone calls and not being able to get far, but we were very happy to be able to assist with getting the county to look at that issue. So with that, we want to be good neighbors. We believe this is going to be a great project. We respectfully request approval with the conditions proposed by staff, along with the addition of item 17, which we are supportive of. Thank you.
All right.
You have two minutes and 34 seconds.
Okay, I will continue to take those comments for those speaking in favor of the development. Seeing none further, Ms. Battle, I will reserve your two minutes and change. All right, we'll move to those speaking against the development.
Ms. Oliver? Yes, this is Ms. Oliver.
Ms. Oliver, all right.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak about this particular project. I'm sort of in a quandary, I'm not either opposed or against, but concerned. And my concern, first of all, I want to say thank you to Councilman Clanton for indulging me in my many emails and my questions about this project. I appreciate you, sir. But they're, based on what I've heard tonight, I, I, I want to truly thank you for, for your involvement, but I also want to bring a couple of things to the council's attention as you make this decision. Number one is an additional traffic study that is being requested, all for it, but because this, because Philip Road divides DeKalb County and the city of Stonecrest, this is a very, very unique situation. And the concern that we have, because I do represent the New Covenant Christian Ministries, which is adjacent to the property that is being developed, the concern that we have is more about traffic at Redan Park, which is not being captured in a traffic study. Again, I'm not very familiar with this traffic study that they're recommending, but our concern is that from the traffic study that I read in, that's on the website, the template said the traffic study was done up until 6:00 PM. I live in that area, I'm not even home at 6:00 PM, and most of the people who live there probably agree, we're not there, we are in traffic. The other issue is that park is very, is used very extensively for football and baseball. Those, that football, baseball practice does not occur at 6:00 PM. So I'm very concerned about the amount of traffic that is generated because of the practices and the games on the weekend that may not be captured in a traffic study. There's a lot of people who don't even live in that area use that park. Now, I realize the park is actually in DeKalb County, but any development that is done on the Stonecrest side will have an impact on that side. So I sincerely hope that you consider that. The other issue I hope you consider is, I live in the neighborhood, and I heard Mr. Wheeler say that we go from a B to a C. I don't know about you, but I don't want my neighborhood to go from a B to the C. I'm hoping the city of Stonecrest will help us go to an A. So if the traffic study says, oh, it's okay, they'll just go down to a B, I hope you consider that in your decisions, because I'm pretty sure you wouldn't want your neighborhood traffic to go from a B to a C, but hopefully you can help us make it an A. Thank you very much.
All right.
That's the only one that I received, so I don't know, at least there's still seven minutes and 28 seconds left.
Um, so we're still in the phase of those who want to speak against, we have a few more minutes, we'll indulge some other folks. Okay, seeing none, we'll revert back to the applicant itself, and Ms. McCubble?
Ms. Battle, how many visitor parking spaces are, in total, are on the property? Or will be on?
I think it's around 25 to 30 parking spaces that will be in addition to the parking spaces that are on the actual property.
There is, it's a one-car garage, and then?
There's, there's two spaces.
Two additional spaces in front. Are those, can visitors park there, or those?
Those are visitor, no, those are visitor parking spaces. I wanted to, I know I had like two minutes left on my time, and I did want to respond a little bit to the items raised by the opposition. One thing that I would like to point out, I'm very familiar with that park. I actually used to coach T-ball for my daughter back in the day, over at Redan Park. I know, mini skill set. And so, the entrance into the area where the football fields and the baseball fields are at is actually further, I guess that's north of where this site is. We are directly across from the entrance points where the recreational center is at. And so those are the two entrance points that are directly across from us. I ventured to guess, at least on the times that I was there, that the mass majority of that traffic is a little bit further up in terms of where they're entering and exiting. I'm not saying that it's not impacting all of Phillips Road, but I'm saying where those cars are entering and exiting are actually further up from this particular site. We don't have control over the entrance points in those particular locations. My hope is that, knowing that there is growth and development coming into this area, that the county and the city will work cooperatively to understand how to address traffic issues. It is not only incumbent upon the developers that are coming into an area to address traffic issues, but it is also incumbent upon the city and the county to work cooperatively to address the issues with growth and development in these areas as we can kind of anticipate things that are coming. And with regards to the traffic study, just to be clear, A and B is not like in high school, A, B, C, D, you know, E, F, and G, from a perspective of how, how well you are, except that from A to a B to a C to D is talking about the amount of time that it takes to sit at the intersection. And so the A to, I think it's D range is considered to be acceptable. Anything that is E to F, the assumption is that is too long of a delay. So we might go from, I think, the delay that he was showing, it might have been like eight seconds to, you know, 12 seconds to 19 seconds. So that's what they're talking about with regards to that. And so we're still performing in an A and B level. There's fairly little delay with regards to being able to move in and out. Now, can that be questioned? That, you know, what the, the timing is, that's something for the traffic engineers to address. But what we do know is that with regards to the pedestrian crossing, we are going to do the safety study and to make sure that if it is warranted, that we install whatever the traffic issue, traffic equipment is in order to allow for safe passage.
All right. Okay. We can finish questioning the applicant now, to use her, excuse you.
My turn.
Use it.
I use it.
That was the buzzer, good deal. All right, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion to close public hearing on RZ-190007.
Second.
All right, properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, public hearing is now closed. Applicant is, appears to be still ready to answer questions.
I don't know if this question's for you, Ms. Battle, or it might be for Chris, in reference to the, the traffic study. The young lady brought a very good point up. When you're doing this traffic study, what timeline are we looking at? Are we looking at from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM? Are we looking at, and what days are we looking at for that traffic study?
So in the traffic study, they are looking at what has historically been considered peak hours. And so the traffic study itself And so, the traffic study itself states what those peak hour times are. I believe it's from like seven to nine or something like that, and then I think it's maybe four to six, I'm not sure.
It's segmented, increments, okay.
Right, so it segments that where what are considered as standard peak hour times. So, they don't go into a neighborhood and say, oh, well, they got a baseball field over here, so, you know, that's probably a later time, so we're gonna, you know, they do a traffic count for the entire day. But, what they're looking at are those peak hour times, are the main focus of the traffic study.
What days are they looking at? Just weekdays, or looking at weekends?
They are looking at weekdays primarily. It's in the traffic study, yeah. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
R100 is basically a standard housing development over most of DeKalb. Think of this area, R100 is what I would call the standard, and is RSM considered a lesser standard than R100?
The R100.
In terms of the size and?
So, RSM is already prevalent in this particular area as a zoning district. The R100 districts are typically, and anything R100, R85, R75 are the older standard lot sizes, which come from fifteen thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet for an R85, to ten thousand square feet for a R75-style lot. RSM lots typically are around anywhere, well, the new code allows it at five thousand square foot minimum for a single-family home, but in the old code, which was RA8 and RA5, that was a six thousand, I think it was a six thousand square foot lot, in a minimum eight thousand square foot lot. So, when the county got rid of those designations, they created the RSM designation, and that is what the city has adopted. So, these are smaller lots in what they call a medium-density area. The lots that are R100 in the past have been more in what they call low-density areas. This particular area, when you look at the fact that we've got townhomes immediately up the street, from these particular townhomes that are zoned MR1, we've got single-family homes that are immediately south of this site that are zoned RSM, and then we've got a mixed-use project that will have single-family, sorry, that will have townhomes and apartments immediately on the other side of this property that are at MR1. You can tell that this is considered to be a medium-density type, low to medium-density community.
To put it more in perspective, you can put, you put in seven units per acre here?
Mm-hmm.
If this was still R100, how many units could you put per acre?
Probably about two. Yeah.
So, that's the difference, five.
Right, but those are single-family. You cannot do.
Yeah, I understand.
You cannot do townhomes in R100.
I'm just saying that it is currently zoned R100.
Absolutely.
And we are changing the zoning to a different zoning to get more units per acre.
Absolutely, and that is allowed within the suburban land use designation, which allows you to go anywhere from zero to eight units per acre. So, we are still consistent with the suburban land use. We are infill project, and infill projects typically come in at a higher intensity level.
And I understand, in the comprehensive plan, that it could be considered a suburban development, but are we really suburban in that area? Is it more of a?
I would say that the city is not suburban at all. I think the whole city is more of an urban environment, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, okay.
I'm just telling you, based on the zonings and what we are seeing, we are not, they talk about it as being sub-urban.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's a conversation for another day.
Okay. Well, continuing the conversation, I'm looking at what you have in terms of the design for the driveway, or for the, I look at the yard, and there's almost no front yard, it's more of a concrete pad that covers.
We're townhomes, we're not single-family.
And that's where I'm going with it, you know, with the townhomes, that's what you get.
You.
Yep. And with the townhomes, that's what you get. You get mostly concrete. The number of parking lots you get per unit here.
Actually, I would like to state that we have exceeded, far exceeded, the open space requirement. We're at, only required to have twenty percent open space, we're at thirty-nine percent open space on this particular project. We have far exceeded what the county and what the city's requirements are with regards to that. Each one of these units will have a rear area that will have access to green space, not only along the perimeter, but within the interior of the lots as well. So, while the fronts of the lots have, as you would say, more concrete, there is open areas in between all of the units and around the perimeter, and again, the large area that we have reserved as well for green space. And you're directly across from a park, and so, you know, we also want people to utilize that park.
Now, I'm going by my personal experience with really single-family homes in my own neighborhood, you'll find four and five cars parked in the driveway, some of them on the grass, because there's not enough parking space. And where we are, you don't have public transit, and it's almost that, well, enough public transit to satisfy the needs of four vehicles per unit is what you're going to find. And the question is, will that be enough parking, or will it be forced to park in an area that's far away, that's far away from where they actually live, and that creates a public safety concern? You know, so just some things that I've noticed about this type of a development. And you have the, you said the existing pond, some of the runoff?
No, we are creating a stormwater detention pond. The pond that's there now is actually more of a lake.
Yes.
And so, it is not a detention pond.
Is that part of your open space that you count in as that thirty percent?
I don't believe that the pond itself.
Okay. There was another issue about safety, and you spoke to that briefly, more about crossing the streets, particularly in front of the rec center. What else do you plan to do to make that safer?
Well, we have spoken with DeKalb County about putting in a crosswalk, and we discussed exactly where the crosswalk would be, so that there would be a designated spot for people to cross. Additionally, we will have sidewalks, which are not prevalent on that street at this time, so we will have a sidewalk that will exist on, adjacent to the site.
Okay. And you referenced another condo development in the area, you said not too far, you know how far?
Literally, it's within walking distance of this one. On the other side of the church, it's on, I can't.
Okay, that's okay, you said, walking distance.
It's literally on the other side of the church.
Yeah, some of us can't walk very far.
Well, it's.
Okay.
Well, it's not more than a hundred.
Thank you, that's good.
Thank you.
Josh Reed. I'm going to put you on the spot, Mr. Reed, if you don't mind. How you feel about this whole thing?
With the improvements that they're doing, I think it'd be a whole lot better, because with the stormwater management system, they're going to be able to control the water a whole lot better on-site, but the water will be off, off-the-site with the storm management system, I think it'd be a pretty good deal, stormwater management.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. And then, I'll go to you, Ms. Clanton. I had a, I had the opportunity to work and observe Rockland Homes and the neighbors around it. You know, I'm from Georgia, and I've never seen a backyard without grass until I went out to that neighborhood, and not that particular neighborhood they're speaking of now, but those surrounding neighborhoods with regards to, how can I use this term, the neglect that another municipality has caused the adjacent neighborhood. However, that's not our fault, nor is it the applicant's fault. But, what I did, what I did see and what I liked is the ability to reconnect those folks to be able to get some remedy with regards to that. That's the first thing. Second is that watching how, you know, Turning Battle and the potential home builder at that site handled their business with the neighbors, I was impressed by that. I was impressed by that, to be able to listen to their concerns and that end of it, and then actually bringing the site down where I thought would be a reasonable, you know, area for that style home. Last but not least, I do agree with Councilwoman Cobble. If we move forward with this, I want to make sure that either by the developer's hand, or by the city's hand, or by the county's hand, or a combination of both, that that place has not become a hazard for going to that park. I want to make sure that we are very clear on that, because I'm very, very familiar with that area, having worked in it before, and participated in several hearings with regards to how they handled the neighbor situation. Mr. Clanton, you are the lead on this, sir. We'll take your, we'll take your part.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, having heard all of I've heard in regards to this project, I've talked with the community, you and I visited the church that is adjacent to this property, and as a matter of fact, there is another townhome development on the other side of the property. Unfortunately, anytime you have any type of build-out in the city of Stonecrest or anywhere, there's going to be additional traffic. So, you know, traffic is going to increase with this development, if we put a church there, if we put a school there, it doesn't matter, it's going to increase traffic. So, what we have to do, in my opinion, is to make certain that there is pedestrian safety along this, in this particular space especially. So, what I'm going to recommend, Mr. Mayor, is that, given the conditions, with the condition, and specifically including condition seventeen, and Mr. Wheeler, you're going to have to verify this right now for me, that with that condition added, this will require this developer to adhere to whatever that study produces in regards to pedestrian safety, crossing over Phillips Road to that park.
If you want to add that on the last bit of condition seventeen, that the results of the study, that the applicant must adhere to it or must provide road improvements, then I would make sure it is in the minutes and in the conditions specifically.
Okay, and I do. So, I'm going to recommend, I'm going to recommend approval, ma'am.
We just add to the extent allowable by law to that condition?
So, now, could you explain that to me? Why wouldn't it be allowed?
There are, there is a state statute that would require, would only allow a city to require those types of improvements if it's determined that it benefits the development. And we don't have the traffic study, so we don't have all that information. So, it would be prudent to just say exactly what she said, to the extent allowable by law.
So, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, that in condition seventeen included language that required a traffic study, the intersection safety analysis?
Correct.
Would that not count as a traffic study, or am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
I'm saying if the traffic study might say that certain things are needed at the intersection, and that those certain things can happen, but we can't, until we know all the details about what those certain things are and who they benefit, can't necessarily require the developer to do them. Unless we have the information that it benefits the development.
So, if that's the case, then I'm going to, Mr. Mayor, if I can, does you?
Yes, sir.
A minute. We bring the developer, representative for developer here, so we can work this out. So, given what you heard, are your group that you develop, are working with, willing to work with what she just said?
I don't know that I have a problem. I don't know that I feel that the need for that additional language, but I am not representing the city. The study that we are doing has specific guidelines that are given by the state with regards to those improvements. We are looking not at a full traffic study, but at a very specific safety study, and within a certain geographic area. And so, the question, I think it's in the statement there, is to whether or not it would be a roundabout, or a four-way stop sign, or the.
Rectangular.
Rectangular, rapid beacon signal. All of those are things which are within the purview, in my opinion, of the applicant if it is for the specific site. So, I'm comfortable with the study and being required to do whatever the study requires us to do, because it's a very limited study.
Is that suitable? Okay. So, that being said, then I can add the statement, I can or cannot add the statement as required by law?
The study itself covers that, but again, I don't represent the city, so I cannot advise you.
I will take your advice, since you do work for the city. So, yes, so what I said, as required by law.
All right. I'll see if I can write a motion?
Yeah.
All right.
So, my motion again is the approval of RZ 19007 to include the sixteen conditions as stated by staff, as well as condition number seventeen, and that the developer will adhere to whatever that study deemed necessary for that particular area as required by law.
Properly moved, or have a second?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, passes. Thank you. Next is RZ 19-0008.
Was that what you wrote? Yes, sir.
I formally do it, though.
Yes, sir, this is RZ-19-009. Applicant is Mr. Saleem Deman.